Good afternoon and evening, everyone. This is the March 2 meeting of the Dayton Commission on Disability. The time is about 4:36 in the afternoon. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Before we go around, I'm gonna ask that all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of America, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. So before we go around, I just wanna note for everyone that this meeting is being recorded on Zoom. Are we live in case we have public input?
Yes.
Okay, if you are live, if there's anybody out here for public input, we'll get to you at the end of the, at the end of our meeting today. But this will be uploaded and available for viewing on YouTube. If we could just go around and note who is here, please, we have one member, Jennifer Dukas, who was unable to join us this afternoon. Kevin?
Kevin Smith, member of Nicole.
Nicole Mello, member.
Ken.
Ken Chee, who is on Forest Selectman.
Jonathan Gale, ADA Coordinator and Chair of the Commission on Disability. And we were gonna, we're under a little bit of a time crunch today, so we're gonna, to the best of our ability, fly through the agenda.
Okay, so we have all business, the first item is elementary, middle school, events, activities, workshops.
So, this is gonna segue into something else later, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it this way. And this is, I'm gonna really just put it on here, 'cause I want everybody to think about this, is there's a distinction in some people's eyes as to what the role, and I don't necessarily disagree, but what the role of the ADA Coordinator is versus what our role is as a commission. And having said that, the commission's responsibility might be more to help put together workshops and activities for the school, for parents, for educational purposes, around IEPs, ISPs, things like that, intervention training, transition plans, things like that. The role of the ADA Coordinator, which is the other hat that I wear, is getting more into the weeds about the school plant, the physical makeup of the school, whether it's lockers that need to be accessible, or lavatories, or those types of things. So, I put that out there because I think it would be helpful for everybody to think about the types of programs and resources the commission as a whole, as opposed to me as the coordinator. Doesn't mean I can't be involved in them, but what the commission would like to bring to the schools for training, resources for families, for teachers, for this bedhead folks. So, it's kinda changing the dynamic a little bit, but I think after having a conversation with that town's administrator, this is probably making more sense to go this way. Because the, my responsibility as the coordinator as well is to work with the schools, but is to support the components that relate to the physical plant of the school. It's not necessarily directly supporting activities that may be going on at the school in terms of direct, I'm gonna use the word intervention. It doesn't mean I can't get involved in the trainings, but as the coordinator, it might be a conflict in some people's eyes if I were to get involved in the trainings for the students themselves. So, I'm just gonna ask everybody to give this some thought and think about it for our next meeting, unless you have any thoughts you'd like to share now.
The only thought I wanna share about it now is, I'd rather that the the commission members get involved anyway, because I think we've kinda, and it's, I don't think it's any fault of anybody here or anybody in general, but we've kinda became just like a meeting club, where we do a lot of meeting and talking and not a lot of doing. So, I think, as myself, I'd rather, you know, contribute to the COD in that way than, we've almost become like the supporting, just the supporting cast for the coordinator.
Yeah.
And not doing a whole lot, you know, as members. So, I'd love to see us like, put that stuff together as individuals, individual members and do it, as opposed to kind of a pack.
And that would, and that would piggyback some of the other things that we've talked about, that you've already been involved in, best buddies, some of those other things too, which the coordinator can support, but really should be done through the commission. So, yeah, I think if, if those of us, I'm assuming at least for next month, we'll all be here. We have our next meeting, maybe if the three of you and Jen, when she listens to this, could come back with some ideas and things that either you could put in place, or find some people that'll put in place, or other members that we could use since we're short, that would be really awesome. So, next item is.
New library building committee.
So, the new library building committee, as you all know, the new library building is in the process of going through CPC right now, in other forms to determine if the funding is gonna be available. The grant that we were working on, I'll give you each a copy of the letter that I submitted on behalf of, I didn't get, I had trouble with letting you know the town, which I fixed it this morning, that's why you didn't get emails from me through the town, by the way, to get this in advance. But this just tells you the letter that I submitted for the grant that I worked on with Jocelyn, who did, she probably did eighty plus percent of the work on the grant, I wanna make that clear, then a lot of it, my sections were sections four and five, reviewing some of the other stuff, but she did a lot of the, the work on the grant, so thank you, Jocelyn, for doing that. We submitted this grant, deadline was five o'clock on Tuesday. We had a bunch of different letters of support from, including from Bill Rudy, from a couple of the school principals, from a couple of families specifically, and family members as well as a child. And those things are different because they use a Rubix to determine if they're gonna fund this grant. I hope this is legible the way I printed that, by the way.
Yes, it is.
But, you know, if this grant goes through, which we hope it will and expect it will, that's $20,000 towards part of the process of the library, but also towards the programmatic component. What you'll see here quickly is that, at the very end of it, you, you have a choice of asking for $20,000, $10,000 dollars, or potentially getting $10,000 if they don't approve you for $20,000. And that's why you'll see the way it's broken up at the bottom. Because your, our ask is for the 20, but if we don't get the 20, we put an ask in for the 10. Feeling being that, what, our ask was for the 10 needs to be in order for the other things to happen as well. So, just so that you all see that in the letter, and then this part of it, so that you're looking at the whole grant. This is ten. So that's what the actual grant, again, I hope it looks okay.
Yes.
Thank you. That's what the grant looks like, I guess, submitted. It's coming back, so.
Copy.
I don't think it's copy all over.
I think it's dog.
That is dog, right? Even though we don't, we don't know anything on there.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, you had highlighted in one of the emails, like, the things that we were looking for. It was like the door, the ramp, and then some equipment in the building. Were these things chosen because of the grant's parameters of what you could get?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, this grant is specifically related
To those.
To the ADA component of the library.
Okay.
That's the entire focus of this grant, for the rural library grant, is around making an ADA comp on ADA efficiency.
And I understand it's ADA compliant, but I didn't know if it had to be those ADA things.
It didn't say what specifically, and it gives you, it gave you a whole parameter from, for example, from ramps to books, to technology equipment, to doing trainings and seminars, workshops. It wants to know how you're gonna do it, how you're gonna involve the public, what your plan is for the grant over the duration of it, which is about almost two years.
Okay.
So, that's why you think, see there, for example, in that grant itself, it talks about workshops and various things. So that, some of that grant money would be used to bring people in to conduct those workshops. So, for example, if you pay somebody to teach sign language, and let's say it's a 12-week session, two, six-week sessions, or something for seniors, rent self-security over a period of time, related to disability. All of these things have to be factored into what you're using the money for, but it has to be related to seniors and disability-related individuals.
Yes. I just had a question about the tech, just because of the folks that I support in my job. I know that the equipment that they get is extremely expensive.
Yes, yes.
And this is a two-year process. After that, two years, if that tech fails, do we have a plan of how we would?
We can go back and ask for the grant again.
Okay.
This is not a one-time, one-and-done.
Okay.
You can ask for that, the same, up to $20,000, I believe it's every other year.
This grant, if we get it, only applied for the ramp, it's going for the children's part of.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's why, yes, it says interior, so, and also for the doors.
Yeah.
So, that doesn't mean, and just to be clear, that doesn't mean that, they don't say that you have to be able to, they want an idea what you're gonna use it for. If there's an alternative resource and you wanna, you know, work with them to change how some of the dollars are used, they allow for that. But they want an expectation of what they think of, what it may be used for. We're in a position, and that's why this letter goes, that I submitted, is just kinda to piggyback some of the grant itself, because of what the need is. So, I think, I mean, I think we put together a good grant, that's the best I can say. I will do. I think we've shown them in the grant, the need for, the need for the grant, what it's for, why we're submitting for it. There's, and this is, there are a lot of libraries waiting for this grant. I think they're gonna do up to 300 awards, something like that.
Is this a national grant?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a ruralized grant, yeah. So, but this gives everybody an idea. And why, you know, since we all, we've talked about it a few times, and I was working on it, as I said, Jocelyn did most of it, I wanted you all to see what it actually looked like in completion and submission. So.
Yeah, and just to, I'm not sure if you mentioned it, I forgot, for the CPC, that library yesterday, to, yes, from the CPC, to feed the library yesterday, making the decision.
Yeah, I was, I just didn't, I stopped for a minute, 'cause I didn't know if anybody had another question or not. But, we did meet yesterday onsite, the building, new building committee, and CPC, and members of the public who chose to participate, and also members of the library trust, and the newest turner Mullen, and the architects as well, for a walkthrough, so that everybody could see the facility, ask any questions they had, see what will be done with regard to accommodations for where the ramp would be, for example, the interior ramp, where the lavatories are gonna be for persons with disability. We did not get into anywhere where other equipment is gonna be, or how the library will be configured for furniture, workstations, all that sort of stuff. This was really just for the facility itself, to tour the facility, and more for the purposes of the CPC, not the ADA component.
Well, and the focus too was more how their current plan to make the building publicly accessible, not really, I never really didn't put any into the library layout at all, but that's something I think.
It was discussed, and what was briefly pointed out, but it wasn't the focus.
I have an accessibility question, in regards to the basement, is there plans to make? 'Cause I, I just, I was.
No, wait, we, we.
No, I was just wondering about the basement, 'cause that's a lot, that's a lot of space with, I guess, being utilized. I don't know.
Yeah, but not until they were focused on the main floor. Right now, that's, that's the plan, and if you were, you went down the basement.
Yeah.
It's a great space out there, but we need an elevator. And right now, when they, they're gonna be shutting off some of the stairs going down there, so one way to get in there now, one way to get out, obviously, and that's from the outside. So, some of the employees from the library can probably store stuff.
Okay.
Public, you and I.
And they're shutting it so that, for safety reasons, so that, okay, alright.
Yeah, that we know.
The plan is, at some point down the road.
Yeah, to make that.
To get an elevator, and I've talked to Jonathan about this, we don't care too about, about this, but we're gonna look for a ramp for the elevator, obviously.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, that's the biggest expense.
That was gonna be my next question.
And I wasn't being over, I think.
No, I'm sorry, but it's just.
No, I think we all have the same sentiment, it's just like, on the overall project, it's like, we don't wanna put the cock before the horse, or, that's not a speculation of what's gonna become of any cost to the global level, but there is a lot of usable space, just to be honest about it.
I think, look, right now, the goal is to hopefully have a library there, be in there. The components, Ken mentioned, for an elevator, for other means of access, for a laboratory that would have to be handicapped, because there's some laboratory downstairs and so forth. Those are all things that would happen down the road, another phase has nothing to do with any of this funding right now. I personally believe, and I've said this to Kevin, CPC and to Ken while we looked at it, I didn't see you, I personally believe that down the road, because of what we would want to do downstairs, and because of the ADA compliant components necessary, that it would not be difficult. It would be work, of course, but it wouldn't be difficult ultimately to get most of this, or a good part of it, the grants that we would need.
Yeah, 'cause really, the biggest, like you're saying, the biggest thing that you need to access is more or less just an elevator and a bathroom. The overall condition, the rest of it, the rooms are accessible, they're in great shape, it's a great space.
There has to be a bathroom down there?
Yes.
Even though there's gonna be an elevator to gain access?
Yes.
Okay.
And has, because of the subject system they have, has to have a pump in it, to pump.
Oh, yeah, like, yeah.
The regulations, the ADA regulations that govern libraries, even in historic buildings, are vastly different than they are for a lot of other public buildings.
Oh, okay.
So.
So, do we have to build it, okay.
So, the library, there's a whole section in the ADA code on libraries. It's the biggest section, believe it or not, you'd think of, like this town hall would be. But libraries are really the biggest section, and in fact, when they train, they devote almost an hour to just the library component depth. So, you know, that goes to what Ken is asking, is that, yes, we have to, most of the downstairs is actually, and something's like, ready, it's a matter of ultimately doing what we would need to do in another phase down the road.
And I see it down the road as almost like a community room downstairs, that the public can use, not for parks and stuff like that, but CPC is already has, but one of their homes, of course.
I was trying to grab an office photo.
It's gonna be the bathroom.
That's fine.
We can't allow like teenagers to have a room downstairs, we need somebody to supervise for that, but I can see.
You guys are nice.
You guys can do, the potential, for example, Nicole, down the road would be, let's say, for CPC, ADA, and somebody else to share an office space together, one of those offices, you know, just to meet the public, if you will, and have, like, I would love to have office hours. Be a great place to have office hours someday, you know, people are already there.
So, it says 45 square feet, you know, there's larger than what a library is now. And down in the basement, it's 45 square feet, so we would double.
Yeah, I would say there's probably, of that, because you have the utility areas and stuff, there's probably, you know, 30 to 4,000 square feet of usable space.
Yes, that's already, that's already walled off with doors and like ceiling, everything.
Yeah, it was kinda like, especially when they started, we're talking earlier on, and kind of like, on the CBC side of things, about HVAC and things like that, I was fully expecting to walk into a dungeon.
Yeah.
You know, a historic dungeon, and I was like, wow.
And that was the church, that church, I've seen that, and we went there before, was keeping our property. They had like rooms for the kids, and they had books down there for the kids that we, so the, while the parents were upstairs in church, the kids could go to upstairs. It's a good opportunity for the town.
So, anyway.
Next, I was continuing the conversation about ADA budget.
So, just to bring everybody up to date in a, in a short version, as a result of our last meeting, I did sit down with Michael, we talked about, we submitted the budget as we discussed here, as is, no changes. The position of the coordinator itself will be out of this budget, and will be discussed separately with the town administrator, Forest Selectman, and the POC. And we'll see where that goes, or doesn't go, but that's gonna be a center part of the whole conversation. Our budget is gonna be what it was. There, the only change we made, we made actually, was to just move the line item for Justina, for my assistant, so that it's in a spot that makes more sense, but the exact amount is still the same, it's still the same $5,000. And the conversation will be had as to moving forward with the coordinator's position, whether it remains a special town employee, or takes on a different, a different look and so forth. But that's something that would be discussed with the town administrator, Forest Selectman, and POC as well. And the Commonwealth a little bit, because I think the state supports having a change from a special employee to some other form. So, again, we'll see where that goes, but that, there's not much else I can say about that, 'cause everybody doesn't have anything else to say about it, right?
Yes, I can, other all business, healing community study.
Do you wanna share about the healing community study?
Um, yeah, I don't have much to share at this point. We just had a meeting, that was the first meeting I've attended in at least a month or so, and we brought on Reverend.
Reverend from.
Yeah, now, I can't think of his name.
Over here.
Um, from either Berkeley or Free Town.
From Berkeley.
He's Berkeley, and I apologize, I can't think of his last name, but he's, yeah, and he's come on, he's gonna be, his church is gonna be one of the drop-in centers. He'll also have access to doing trainings and stuff like that. So, him alongside with Invision Farm are gonna be two of our drop-in centers for folks that are looking for resources, this is either harm reduction medications, or just resources over there, they can have counseling and stuff like that. I think that's all I really have.
Is there a possibility of a drop-in center in Dayton at any point, or is that not really part of the overall?
No, we've already selected all our like anchor sites.
Okay.
And Dayton just happens not to be one.
Well, Berkeley's a move, I think, 'cause I kinda follow along with what you were doing, and I saw that like you did a bunch of outreach on Facebook, which is nice, the programs.
Yes, we have a, we have a Facebook page, it's community studies, no, healing community studies, Berkeley, Free Town, Dayton, I'm not sure which order it is on Facebook.
Yeah, it was just, I think it was just put up.
Yes, so, it doesn't have a lot on it yet, but we're hoping to, as we do different things, and as the different communities implement different things, we'll put them on there so people will have access to that.
I think Berkeley's a good spot, because it's kinda centrally located, so the community's involved, so it's.
But Invision Farm is not that far from the highway too, so if people were to come from other places.
One of the things that, that I did when we were in the, the meeting, and then separately, they reached out the other day, Karen reached out and sent me an email and asked when they do the next monthly meeting, if I would highlight what, and I didn't talk to you ahead and talk to you about this, what Dayton has done or is doing, or would like to be able to do for persons with disability with regard to what, you know, what we can offer them, or what we might like to offer them in the future. So, and I'll shoot, I'll shoot you the email that Karen sent me, so that you and I can talk and maybe come up with some ideas between the House Department and ADA. The other thing that I wanted to get involved in, and Karen thinks it's a good idea as well, I think, some of the other folks have sent me emails later with Tara around the communications component. So, one of the things that's gonna be really important going forward in this project is putting together, they're out there, ready to start putting together the outreach components, of how they're gonna reach people in the community, how they're gonna reach agencies, organizations, you know, first responders, what they're gonna have with info materials and handouts, all that sort of stuff as well. But, what was missing is that how they're gonna communicate with people who have different types of disability, from having handouts and braille, to having interpreters available for sign language if necessary, maybe some of the Clubhouse programs, or some of the actual sites, you know, where people may have to go for treatment and so forth. So, I wanna make sure that that component doesn't get missed. Since a lot of this concept is dedicated to people with disability, it's important to make sure that, in my opinion, all disabilities are included. So, in order to do that, that means reaching out to, you know, the various Clubhouse programs, to the group home programs as well, and not just everything on the street. So, I, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that.
Uh, no, but you just made me think of something, you mentioned communication. The Board of Health is gonna be gaining access to what will be our own translator device. And this is, obviously, this is the language, the language translated, but if we ever came into anything in regards to communication challenges, a language barrier, we're at some point gonna have that soon.
If you could let me know, and we'll put it on our page too, and make people aware, so I'm aware, because I've had one situation so far where I had a person who had a disability-related hip issue, and really couldn't speak any English, and I had to connect him somewhere else to get the interpreting done. So, that would be great.
Yeah, as soon as we get that, let's, let's do the Emergency Competitors Coalition that we're part of.
Alright, thank you.
Next item, we already covered ADA supported rural library grant.
Yep.
Coordinated services transportation plan.
Coordinated services transportation plan. Again, I, Nicole, you may have gotten the survey, did you get that the other day?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I don't know if you're able to fill it out.
I haven't completed it yet.
I know, I literally just got it last week, so I just, I say that because I got it last Thursday, and then in doing it, realized that they, Serpent didn't have the names of any of the other town officials or agencies, why, I don't know, no idea, who should have gotten the survey for transportation for people with disabilities and seniors. So, it's due this Friday, unfortunately, and then there'll be another one going out from Serpent as well, which is for the general community. So, if we identify residents who are seniors, shut-ins have disability, peoples that you may have listed up in the Board of Health as well, who might benefit from different types of transportation, we're gonna have to get the survey to them, and in some cases, they may need help filling it out. It's, it's gonna be on paper and online, but people may need to fill it out to see. I mean, it's important for them to hear from residents of the community. If they don't get residents, the community of all, then it may not bring transportation to the community. And that's the goal.
The second survey is for gen, so the.
The general public.
The first one is disability-related?
The first one, well, the first one is only related to eight town agencies.
Okay.
So, it's only for, for example, for COD, or for primetime, or for the Board of Health, or for Robin, the director of Housing.
Is the purpose of this, the, the plan to provide, be a blanket community public transportation?
The purpose of the grant, of, well, the purpose of their survey is to look at what the need is.
No, no, I'm saying that it, not, oh, yeah, I haven't asked the question. Is, are they trying to produce public transportation for everyone?
They're trying.
For the disability-related?
This is, this is gonna be senior disability-related.
Okay.
And the purpose of this is to find ways to augment and enhance the transportation that exists.
Okay.
So, for example, somebody can use, well, they wanna use GATRA as our service provider for persons with disability, that's the big service provider in the area I've been talking to. But, GATRA's great, but they don't have enough drivers who are certified and trained for their wheelchair vans. So, we may have to look at alternatives for that. And that may be a consortium with different towns together doing something like that, or looking at, you know, 5310 money for a rent, or something like that, for towns to share a driver and share a vehicle. So, maybe other ways for towns to augment as well.
Can you send me some info just on this, what's going on with this in general?
Absolutely.
I even just think about like, sometimes I'd see the bus to go on the quads and play pickleball, or something like that.
Okay, so that goes to the next thing on here, I think.
And then the next, what is?
And we have it actually under.
Yeah, new business, consumer service update.
Look, can we skip that for a minute, if somebody mind? I think there's another one.
I'm gonna check back transportation.
No, this is the transportation.
Alright, you know why, 'cause it's just Kevin, I'm sorry, can I say, wait, do you guys mind?
Let's think about it. Oh, wait, I'm not recording now.
So, come, I wanted to talk about another transportation component.
It sounds like it's within transportation.
Yeah, it is, so, there's another thing that I was just talking about, literally Tuesday night. And I sent it out late Tuesday night, this is for a meeting actually here Monday morning at 10 o'clock. And this is, this is sort of what you're talking about. So, the AARP has grants available for local community transportation on an as-meet-or-one-day basis, sometimes two-day basis. And they help, the grant is to either hire drivers, hire vehicles, lease vehicles, or look at vehicles in your town that need a driver and, you know, gas, et cetera, et cetera, that you may have available, or other West End dormant. So, I'm meeting here Monday, and it's to take people to anything, to take seniors and people with disability to anything they wanna go, within a certain mile range. So, that's what you said, pickleball, that's what made me think of it. So that if it, if it was, for example, on Wednesdays and Thursdays, if the grant were approved, and people wanted to go to pickleball on Wednesdays and Thursdays, this fan would pick them up, they'd go to pickleball. I'm meeting here on Monday with Tom Ferry, at primetime. Robin could make it, but she's again from Housing, but she's gonna try and turn this by Zoom, to talk about the grant, the deadline is the 15th. So, if everybody wants to go forward and submit something, we're just gonna have nine days to get it in from there. It might be the equivalent of $10,000, or $15,000, or whatever, to cover the cost of providing ancillary services in your, in the town. And the purpose for that is because the real purpose of regional transportation authorities is to allow people to use the transportation system to get anywhere, anytime. And that doesn't necessarily mean to a doctor's office, it could mean to go to the restaurant for dinner, or to a church, or to the grocery store shopping. We don't have that ability in a town like this to do it. So, and a lot of towns don't, and the RTAs don't have the resources to do it, even though that's technically the requirement. So, this is a way that AARP has to help bridge some of that gap. So, that's what that is. If anybody wants to join, Monday 10. Feel free, right here. Does that answer what you were?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, new business, consumer service update.
Consumer service update for the past month, I think I mentioned yesterday. I had three individuals contacting me for service. One of the individuals actually had a situation where they were trying to get clinical support because they had an opioid issue. This person was a shut-in in town, but I was able to arrange for it, and get the connections that they needed, so that they were able to get the resources. So that they were able to get the resources, and from what I understand, everything is going really well, the transportation's been set up for them, it's all good. The other two, one was related to a mass health issue, which all I could do really was direct them and get them to the right supervisors and arrange for them to get a personal visit over at the talking location for mass health to get everything figured out over on Spring Street. The other one was a person who was trying to apply for some other state services and had a language barrier. And again, I was able to arrange for interpretive services from that state agency for them. So on an individual basis, we're going about three or four, five per month for the past four months.
Can I ask you, was anyone reached out in regards to the SNAP benefits being lowered?
Not yet, no, that was just announced the other day, so.
Yeah, it was, did it happen today? It was happening like soon.
Yeah, they just, they, I think they just put the press release out about it two days ago, or something like that. I haven't had anybody reach out yet. I wanted to wait and get more information from the state, and then I was going to put it on our, our Facebook page.
Okay.
For anybody who might need it. I hope it's there when I get home tonight, it wasn't here earlier today, and I'm going to post it over. I know that there are some residents in town who have disability, who are on staff, who could benefit from having extra support and actually could lose their benefit now because of the reduction. When Nicole's referring to the SNAP is lowering its requirement because COVID is over. So because COVID is over now, the qualification levels are going down, back down, which will put people at pre-level qualifications where some people otherwise qualify because of COVID, because of the COVID, you know, additional money that was pumped into SNAP. There are supposedly, the way the press release came out, there are placeholders in there that will allow people who still potentially qualify, even though the rates are going back down. But if anybody with disability needs help with that, do fill out the application, again, make the phone calls qualify. I can do it, if I can't do it, I can direct them to the folks who can assist them with it, depending on, you know, other agencies that they already might be connected with, so.
And there might be more outlook soon for, in regards to testing as that drops, as they drop the, I mean, state of emergency, whatever we are for COVID. They don't no longer pay for testing.
Correct.
So we may see some.
Just for testing or for those kits?
For the test kits, you're allowed to go for the modified.
Actually, the test kits technically were supposed to stop being available yesterday.
Okay.
So I don't, I mean, I'm still seeing alerts, getting free test kits, that kind of thing, like there's some.
Because the skin is still out.
Yeah.
Or Medicare.
Yeah.
Still, I don't think any test kits.
That might change once he pulls the.
That's supposed to change too, Medicare, all of it's supposed to stop.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be free anymore.
But what's, what's still supposed to be free for now at least is getting tested. The kits will cost, but the testing will.
Okay, that would make sense.
So the testing itself is supposed to still be free, so.
I didn't realize COVID is over.
It, it almost.
It's reduced.
Almost, whenever he announces it, it's over.
Yeah. How long do you have on time to say?
New business is March 8th, or a certain meeting, ADA orderly budget discussion.
Don't know if that will be on for March 8th. I talked to Mike about that again earlier today, got what I, what I mentioned earlier about talking to the Board of Selectmen and the FIDCOM, potentially with a person from MOD. But I don't know if it will be on or not for the 8th. I will send everybody an email and let you know. If it is on for the 8th, which is next Wednesday, I would ask each of you, if you, I know you're in a different situation as a member of the Board of Selectmen, but I would ask both of you, and I'll reach out to Jen too, if you can either be there in person or joined by Zoom. Participants are great. Again, I don't know what form any discussion would take yet, but it would be great to have you there to be part of it.
Would be there if I was.
Would be there if I was.
Oh, I know, I know, I think you said you're going to be there for updates or something, but if you're able to be there, Nicole, too, that'd be great. And also there, reach out to Jen, give her the same information, I don't know if she can or not, so. That's it.
You've had everybody spread the minutes for.
Yeah, actually, I didn't do, I don't have the minutes.
Okay.
From whoever's, we'll have to kind of do it the whole.
Do the next.
Do you want me to motion table those?
Yeah.
Can I motion to table the approval of the two to 2023 minutes?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Here we go, any discussion? Looking around, Karen, get into me. No discussion. Nicole?
Aye.
Kevin? Jonathan? Step me down.
How do we table it?
Do we have anyone?
We do not have anyone on Zoom.
All right.
Said the next three meetings.
Three meetings, we have.
April 6th and April 1st.
Yep. That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn at 5:12.
I'll second that.
Here we go, any discussion? Looking around, Karen, get into me. No discussion. Nicole?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.